Good morning and welcome to the September 18th, I'm sorry, September the 5th, 2023, meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I will call on Commissioner Faircliff for the invocation.
Let's stay in an honor guarding country. Let's pray. Dear heaven and father, once again, we come into the presence of our citizens and your wonderful countenance, and we ask your blessing to be on this meeting and that each commissioner here be mindful of those things that are pleasing in your sight and in the sight of our citizens. Be with each one of us as we deliberate today, and we ask you things in your name.
Amen.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and before we go on, I want to acknowledge two August birthdays that I failed to acknowledge at the last meeting, and that is of Commissioner Keith. He is a, well, Commissioner Adams said you're getting old, but I was going to say that you are a fresh 25 times whatever.
Yes, and still younger than Commissioner Adams.
And the beauty of the bunch, Dr. Jeanette Council, happy belated. The longest-serving commissioner that we've had. You are. So I do want to acknowledge them, and I hope that you all enjoy 50 more, 70 more additional years. Do we have Commissioner Boos online yet? That might be him calling. I doubted it was just a good way to make an excuse for my phone. Commissioner Boos not on?
There's a missed call.
Okay, well, he'll be on. We do expect him on here shortly. At this time, I would like to recognize Rashona. Did I, tell me how to say it right. Rashana. Rashana Manuel for receiving North Carolina Local Government Finance Officer Certification. If you will come to the podium, please. Rashonia. Rashana Manuel. And it says, this is to certify that Rashana Manuel has demonstrated to the Finance Officers Certification Committee professional experience and knowledge in the area of local government finance, and therefore has qualified for the period of January 1st, 2023, to December 31st, 2027, as a certified local government finance officer. Congratulations. Did you get us? At this time, I would like to recognize the former and outgoing members of the DEI Advisory Committee. And as I call your name, you can come to the podium. I will read the certifications first. It says this is a certify, this is a certificate, and presented to the outgoing DEI committee member. This certificate is awarded in appreciation of your contributions to Cumberland County government through the service on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee. Thank you for your commitment to the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and your dedication to making Cumberland County government a workplace where all employees feel valued and respected. We recognize your participation on this committee has been, in addition to your assigned job duties. We thank you for your passion and commitment to this endeavor. Thank you for making pride a fact in Cumberland County. Presented this fifth day of September 2023, signed by myself. So at this time, I will call Al Flores. Thank you, sir. And if you could just stand back so we can get a group picture. Alisa Brashear. Okay, Sarah Reyes. Maya Perry. Thank you. Thank you. Ivana Mendez. Gary Crumpler. Harden Brown Jr. Felice Chavez. Ty Vault. Ain't at work today. Talise, oh, they look like, I'm sorry. Megan McLaurin. No. Ricky Hare. Alvin Chestnut. Thank you. Nora Armstrong. Oh, okay. And Ms. Brenda Jackson. Thank you all for what you have done and for your participation.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Okay, I don't have my glasses on, so I fail to acknowledge our library director, Ms. Faith Phillips. Thank you so much for joining us. And we have Ms. Irene Grimes here. Thank you so much for joining us. Who is with the, oh, the chair of the Board of Elections, that's right. Our new chair of the Board of Elections. Okay, at this time, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. Manager Greer, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Chairwoman, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, at this time, I'll call for a motion. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor? Oh, we have Commissioner Boos online. Hi, Commissioner Boos.
Good morning. Sorry, that was a little late. I didn't do the link first.
Now, we will move on to presentations by the Emergency Operation Plan Review. Manager Greer, if you would introduce the item and the presenter.
Yes, Jean Booth, our Emergency Services Director is going to go over the updates to our emergency operations plan that we recently enacted and answer any questions you may have. Gary Crumpler is also here to assist in the presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Booth.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, Chairwoman Stewart. Hope you had a great Labor Day weekend. So, we're pleased to present today the updated emergency operations plan. It's a living document, so as we, each year, we plan, we review, we exercise, we have events, and we make improvements on that plan. What's significant about this plan is FEMA has issued in 2001, a new format, a new framework for the way we build emergency operations plans. Also, we've added some new additions that Gary will be going over as well in our presentation. There is an action item connected to this for approval of the plan and promulgation, which allows us the authority to enact the plan. And I would be remiss if I didn't introduce as well Laura Smith and Mark Baker, emergency management planners, and Gary that has worked very hard in updating this plan with all of our partners as well. This included in the plan. Someone turn it over to Gary and be ready for any questions when he's done.
Good morning, Chairwoman and Commissioners. Hope you all had a great Labor Day. As Jean stated, I'll be presenting the emergency operation plan. As Jean stated, there's been, the last update to the emergency operation plan was in 2017. It came before you. Brief overview, not a lot's changed as far as the overall position makeup and what each department is responsible for. What we did is we went and collaborated with partners additionally, and we changed the format of the emergency operation plan to allow for better integration with the state. So for those of you that don't know, we're like the local version of FEMA. So it goes FEMA, State of North Carolina Emergency Management, and then it goes us to the county, and then we work with local cities to manage the emergency operation plan. So a few reasons why we updated, of course, the organizational structure as well as policy updates. A few years back, the Board of Commissioners elected to change the way that they declare state, or that you all declare state of emergencies. And we outlined that within the plan, which wasn't really defined in our previous plan. We also, as Jean stated, the comprehensive preparedness guide, which is FEMA's framework for how we develop emergency operation plans. It goes step by step on what we're supposed to do, what partners we're supposed to bring in, and just the overall process. We also updated because of past events such as COVID, Hurricane Matthew in Florence, and then most recently, the hot, extreme hot, extreme cold that we've been experiencing within our community. And then we also, as a part of our overarching plan, we conducted the THIRA, which is our Threat Assessment. So we bring together a bunch of our community partners, people from the community, people from our VOAS, our FAE-based organizations, to define what our threats are here in Cumberland County. Again, we updated for better FEMA integration, stakeholder input, and this plan has already been submitted to the State of North Carolina. They've given their blessing on it, and we're looking for action for you to approve it. Other notable highlights are that we updated the Mass Care and Emergency Assistance Plan, so anything dealing with sheltering. And then we updated and developed the Extreme Heat and Cold Plan. Before, Cumberland County didn't really have parameters for when do we open a warming center, when do we open a cooling center. So we really got with our partners from DSS, Social Services, and defined what those parameters were. We removed the animal protection part. It really needed to be a standalone plan, and we worked with everybody from Cooperative Extinction, also Animal Services, to update that part of our emergency operation plan. We also added a quick reference guide for our department. So if there's ever a question on if you have a role in the emergency operation plan, you flip to the annex, you look up your department, and it tells you what your roles and responsibilities are. And then we moved to the essential functions format, meaning that FEMA defines 15 core capabilities or 15 functions that they say will help the community achieve back to normal state after a disaster occurs. And our recommendation is for you to promulgate the plan, to give it authority, and to give it some backbone for our first responders, and also sign in the statement of approval, acknowledging your responsibilities, which deal with the LEPC as well as declaring states of emergency. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Let me say this, then I'll go to Commissioner Adams. There are a couple of questions. What temperatures do you open up the cooling station for in heat and cold?
So for the, I'll start with the cooling centers first. So we follow in line with the white flag parameters, so 32 degrees and/or wind chill at 32 degrees. As far as the heating, or sorry, as far as the cooling centers, we open up whenever temperatures are at least 100 degrees, 100 degrees or higher for three consecutive days if there's a heat advisory issued by the National Weather Service, or if the temperature is 105, that automatically triggers that. And the reasoning behind that is the three days is because of the heat wave. There's multiple definitions for whenever a heat wave is enacted or declared by the National Weather Service. It could be anywhere from two to four days of irregular temperatures, for lack of better words. And then 105, the 105, if you look at the heat index, that chart in the emergency operation plan, you'll see where that is highlighted in danger. And also that a heat advisory is almost always declared if the temperature is 105. Sometimes if there's 100 degrees and the humidity's not quite right, the National Weather Service won't declare a heat advisory.
So why do we, if it's not a heat wave, why don't we open up if it's, say, 103 on one day? Is it just because it's not a, it's not two to three days because there's not a heat wave?
Yeah, most of our decisions are made based off the chart and what they highlight as dangerous. I will say that the county management, as well as the board, always has discretion within this. That's written within the plan. Like today, it's not necessarily parameters, but we've opened up cooling centers because, of course, the temperature is supposed to be extremely hot. So there's always that wiggle room, and county management, as far as, as well as commissioners, have that decision.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams.
You know, I'm not going to vote for this today because I don't have the plan. All you told me was basically, we moved this to that, this to that, we updated this, but I don't see that. It didn't come to us. All we got was.
The presentation.
I got eight pages, and it was just that. So I don't see, it's, you added a page on page 2I, you implemented, edited approval of page 3, you updated all of this, but I don't see that. I don't have any of that. I don't have the plan.
There was a separate email that went out that you should have received. So I'll, I'll.
I mean, I don't, and maybe it didn't, and maybe it came over the weekend, but I don't remember seeing that. Maybe it did, and it might be my, could be my fault.
No, I'll make sure that you all get the communication or the email, because I got a copy of it, because I was reading it this weekend, and everybody, I thought everybody, I saw everybody's email on there. But we'll bring it back and make sure that you got a plan and bring it back for approval.
It should have been attached to the, to this presentation so that, as an attachment, so that we could see it all at one time. Commissioner Keith, I'm sorry.
And when you do that, can we highlight what was changed in red or whatever so that we know what was changed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Keith.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. I think everybody knows I've been a real advocate for first responders, emergency services. But this, this presentation almost seems like we have to do it, and there's not a whole lot of meat into it, and I'm going to get specific. In 2017, there was no COVID. There was no things like, that communities had to be prepared for, like civil unrest. We have, since I've been a commissioner, we've had tornadoes, we've had hurricanes. Just last week, we had the potential for a hurricane in our first-ever 911 center with an EOC, and I'm not, I hope there was some sort of dry run or something to go, go through this. And I'm going to talk about a few other things. We're probably 10 days right now from potentially another major hurricane coming, and I'm just not so sure that with the inclusion of the 911 center, the co-location of the EOC, and everything else, that there's an emergency plan to truly, truly communicate with the, with the citizens. Social media is a big thing. It has been. Most of the, most of the conversation through hurricanes Florence and, and Matthew were through social media. And I think although this may be what is required, if this is going to be a living, breathing document, it should encompass all of the things that emergency services can and will be responsible for. And that's not fire and rescue, but that's law enforcement. How is a sheriff going to operate with the local municipalities, the federal police, or Hope Mills when they, when they have one? And finally, I'm going to ask sort of a similar question to the chairwoman asked, is, again, I've been through a lot of these, and it seems like every single day, every single time we have an emergency, we have to decide which shelter will be open. Well, and that's confusing to the citizens. Of, you know, why don't we have the same shelters open? Each shelter is going to require that a team from public health, a team from social services, a team from the Sheriff's Department, are all going there if they know where they're going, and these shelters, which shelters are pet-friendly? Which shelters can families go to? And, you know, if we're going to make a document that talks about emergency services, it's got to be all-encompassing and very comprehensive. If this is just so we can tick a box, then I understand that, but I would like to see one that is much more in-depth, that the citizens know there's an emergency coming. This is my shelter. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
I agree with all my counterparts here, and also a concern for me, as Mr. Keith was just stating. I noticed on here for this presentation, when it talks about shareholders, but I really think, or what I would like to see would be more like a chart. It states on here that you all did a threats analysis, but just even for, you know, the general public to better understand it, if we did have a chart that states like the social services, public health, as he was stating, where exactly it would go and how it would work. So maybe, you know, a little bit more in-depth, but simplified type of chart for everyone to understand when emergency does come up, what the moving pieces and actions are is perhaps something I would like to see.
So to, to comment on the, the sheltering aspect, that decision is ultimately made based off the recommendation of the Emergency Services Director to county management. We have a, a, a meeting to talk about the impacts of the storm and the potential. We also have those communication meetings with our community partners, Salvation Army, American Red Cross, to see what they're doing in response to the shelter operation, and make those decisions based off that. As far as community outreach, I know that we had our Public Information Office inside the EOC. We did have a dry run of our emergency operations center to test out technology, to test out all those moving components. We also have an interactive shelter dashboard on our county website that gives citizens real-time information about what shelters are open, which ones are pet-friendly. And then also, typically in our press releases, that information is communicated out. So, again, we, like, like you said, we did bring in all of our partners that, we, we had a partial activation, which consisted of emergency operations service staff, 911 up-staffed, as well as PIO, county management, social services, Department of Public Health. All those partners were present within our plans room in the EOC. Based off the impacts, we didn't think that the storm warranted a full activation in which we bring in our electrical co-ops, although we did set up a conference line for those partners to call into. And we will work on that recommendation as far as making that more accessible to citizens.
And just one more question. I noticed that you stated your partners can call into a line. We talk about the website a lot, which is great, but many times when people are in distress, it's a lot easier and effective, and some people don't go to the website. Is there a number where people can call to find out what shelters, and can we maybe publicize that more? I know I get emails, I'm sure our counterparts do all the time, and phone calls about what number can they call. Sometimes it's not as accessible. For us, it is, but those in distress to get to a website, which is great, is up there. Sometimes that's a little bit more difficult. So maybe we can publicize a phone number more or something like that.
Yes, ma'am. We, we have a hotline number established, and typically, whenever we have our partner communication calls consisting of emergency services partners, those advocates from, like, City of Fayetteville, Community Policing, are the homeless liaison that they have assigned, as well as our partners from the Sheriff's Office who interact with our homeless population and at-risk population more than other partners. And then they get that communication line, and we didn't receive so many calls this, this time, but our previous activation, we received up to 15 calls for transportation to shelters. And we, we, we worked through that, and we got those citizens' transportation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Faircliff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are just two quick things. One is the emergency services request the chair to sign the statement of approval, acknowledging the Board of Commissioners' responsibilities as indicated in the emergency operations plan. I'd like to see what our commissioners' responsibilities are before you sign that. I guess that's part of the overall plan that we'll get. Second thing is, I'd like to recognize Mr. Crumpler and acknowledge his service as not only a member of our emergency services department, but also he is a volunteer, I'd like to acknowledge his service as volunteer chairman of the Emergency Operations Committee. So that's, that encompasses a lot of people, a lot of people that aren't associated with Cumberland County. They're hazardous materials people, people in industry, a lot of things going on that he kind of hot-chores that. So I want to acknowledge that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we'll, we'll highlight those responsibilities on another slide presentation. As indicated, the main board responsibilities involve declaring states of emergency and the LEPC appointing those board members.
Commissioner Boos, did you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with all the comments and concerns that have already been expressed, and I appreciate the, how it's a work in progress. I get that part. But again, I always harp on kind of what Mr. Keith said, is if the power's out, the computers are down, it's going to be a whole lot easier to know if you are involved in all this, that you just need to make arrangements to go to A, or B, or C on a regular basis. It also means we won't have to try to get generators for 70 potential sites and waste millions and millions of dollars. This has been going on for five or six years where we don't have generators at the places we're telling people to go to, to be safe. So if we get a plan, it shouldn't be each time someone has to go find us on. go find us on Facebook or, you know, uh, you know, computers they don't have, phone lines that are down, power lines that are down. So, uh, you know, we need to identify some regional areas based on what's happened in the past, um, and put those out there as this is going to be the place if you're nearby, or this is going to be the place if you need a ride or something. But they won't know if they need a ride until they find out where it is when their power's out. So I mean, it's just, we, we're, we're not, we don't have a net under there yet. We've got a lot of people running around baskets. So if we all get together and get a net, we know these areas will be open, whether it's heat, cold, storm, power outage, hurricanes, and anything else we need to let them know, we can get the information out to them on all these places. But we don't need to wait till there's an emergency and people are in crisis to start letting them know where they might be able to go. It should be already reflex. Uh, everyone knows certain landmark areas in their, in their region, in their area, whether it's high schools, churches or whatever. It just seems logical that high schools, community colleges, Fayetteville State, they have mass, uh, showers, cafeterias, things that if it's going to be extended that we can't do over at the EOC. So, uh, we need to have a plan and this is not a plan.
Let me ask you this. I notice that normally when there is a disaster or something going on where we, sheltering is needed, it's normally Smith Rec Center and another, is there another one? I know that it's Smith, but, and, and that seems to be an ongoing thing. So going along with Commissioner Booth said, um, is, I, I don't know why it's Smith. I don't know the area. Um, if that's why you choose it because of the area, I don't know. But I agree with him and that we need a certain location so that when nothing is going on, people still know where to go. So if you can identify those places, um, beforehand when there's nothing going on so that it's second nature, well, this is where we know to go.
Understand. We, we can do that as well. And that's, that's not a problem. We do have quite a few shelters locations that have been, uh, had shelter surveys conducted by American Red Cross and we utilize those. And sometimes we, we prefer to have some flexibility. For example, this previous, uh, incident we had last week, fortunately we didn't have to, uh, have a lot of resources enacted. However, if we would have opened those shelters in a high school, that would have impacted school. They would have had to shut down schools. So we want to look at places that's got, uh, um, some flexibility dependent on the level of, of impact or projected impact. But I also agree just having that certain realm of locations, not just on the internet or on our webpage.
Right.
That everyone's aware this will be open.
Well, we all remember what happened during Matthew, um, or Florence, one of them, where it was so hard to get actually people out of the shelters.
Yeah.
The Westover Rec Center. It was difficult to get them out of the shelters long after it passed. Commissioner Keith.
Yeah, um, let me just, uh, follow up with a couple of things. And first of all, as elected officials, guys, there is nothing more important to us than public safety. So if you feel the passion on this board, it is because that we recognize that we always are going to try to do better. So please don't take any offense to this. Um, you've done a great job, Mr. Crumpler. I appreciate it because I've been involved with how we've interacted, uh, at a higher level with some of our volunteers in there. And I think that's very, very important. Um, to, to the point where we always thought about shelters, if I can give an analogy, if we told the citizens that every time we had an election that they'd have, it could be one of three or four different polling places, I don't think that would be acceptable. And that, it's kind of what the, the same analogy is here. We want to make it simple that everybody knows because we can get them quicker. And Gene, to the point that you were just saying about how it impacts schools, I would hope that if we're declaring disaster, that school probably would think that it's a disaster also. And this one was only one day. Um, and if I saw the numbers right on this one, it, it wasn't utilized very well. Is that right? Yeah.
Correct. And we only had four in total.
Yeah.
For two shelters. For two shelters, two in each.
Yeah. So we activated a complete team on, on both of those. But anyway, so I just want to say, look, guys, we know it's a good job. Hats off to you. Um, but we're, we're just trying to be better and this is a passion for everybody. I think you heard it from everybody on this board. Thanks.
And, and if I could, uh, one more point of information. Um, so this plan right here is not designed to be, um, the end all be all. So outside of this plan, we have multiple other plans, um, that address, uh, shelter. We have a sheltering pandemic plan. We have a active assailant plan. We have all these other plans that merge into this. And if you look on plans and authorities, those plans are referenced within that. And also, um, if, if I could, um, again, we plan based off worst case scenario and also as well as talking with our community partners. And as you stated, just the last few times we've activated a shelter, uh, this last time, uh, we had four total shelteries and then there was 12 in the Salvation Army. Uh, Hurricane Ian, whenever we opened back in September 22, we had 12 adults, one teen and one service animal. And in winter weather, we have 29 adults. So depending on what the impact is, depending on what the hazard is, we have a dramatic span from four anywhere up to almost 30 people. So just wanted to give you that information.
Thank you for that. Um, and I know we, it wasn't utilized, well, those that needed sheltering came and it was only four people, but that's four people that needed it that were there. And I would rather be prepared than underprepared, no matter, and I understand calling people from DSS and everywhere to house a shelter, but I would rather us be prepared than not prepared. Um, last one, Commissioner Jones.
I would also just like to say that, um, in agreeance with whatever also has been said, once they're identified and we do decide to perhaps go for it with that being something that's advertised, not just when we have an emergency, perhaps we can consider, uh, signs because we know people go by what they see and word of mouth, of course, just keeping it simple. For instance, as you were stating, not just the Salvation Army, but if we do decide that the library or whatever school, perhaps we can have for just a recommendation, um, you know, decal signs, just like I can see this sign clearly, register of deed, something that's permanent in a window or something, because then people can get used to seeing that year round, as Mr. Booth was saying. And, you know, we know that word of mouth is always the best practice. So maybe we can consider something like that at these locations that will be up year round for people to be able to know that it's there and spread the word.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation. Oh, I'm sorry.
And we appreciate the hard work that you, the hard work that you do. Sometimes it is difficult. It's just hard to anticipate everything, but we appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Manager Greer.
One last thing. Um, sometimes it's not warranted for the heat index and the opening of shelters. I kind of leaned on the side of caution. Uh, Gene and I, like this weekend, I was saying, Gene, although we may not have a heat index, when it gets to 96, uh, we have a, a large homeless population is outside. Uh, I say, well, let's open up the cooling station. Not necessarily that we may have to, that we're required to, but just on the side of caution, it's just best to do that. Same thing with the hurricane, uh, they just recently passed, although we didn't have to. I wanted to make sure that we had, uh, some facilities open just in case something happened. So, well, we may get overkill, but we'll, and we'll be planning for 95L over the next 10 years.
Well, one life saved is a great, um, deal. We're going to move on. Um, let me recognize the president of Fayetteville Technical Community College, Mr. Mark Sors. Thank you so much for being here. We're going to now move on to the consent agenda. Um, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd, I'd like to remove item C and item I.
Okay. If I can get a motion with the exclusion of item C and I.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Commissioner Adams.
Uh, I go to, um, C, which is the, uh, request to call for a public hearing. The problem I have is if, if this board is going to call a public hearing, we need to also advertise, I, I don't know if we advertise it on our website or whatever, but it looks like the sheriff's office is going to do the advertising on their office and county social media channels and by posting notices at the law enforcement center. And I go to the, uh, clerk and to the, uh, attorney. If we're going to have a public hearing, we've got to announce, don't we have to, uh, put out that it's a public hearing? It's not in this, uh, in here.
We typically do. I think for this particular grant, it, it is not a advertised requirement for the board commissioners, but we can certainly do so.
Well, I mean, is the sheriff's office requesting the board to commission schedule a public hearing? And it's a public hearing for the public to do that. I think we ought to notice a public hearing.
Okay.
Does that, does that make sense? And so I would just, uh, move to approve this of a public hearing to be held on that and that the board, uh, and the clerk noticed this as a public hearing so that the public will know. Come to the second.
A second.
It's been moved and properly second, uh, that we announce it as well?
Yeah, we approve, uh, the request for the public hearing and then it be, uh, noticed in wherever we notice it to all our people that it's a public hearing.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. Commissioner Adams.
Uh, the, the manager can kind of maybe do this. Item I was, uh, and I saw that the local government and UNC school government says on these opias that we ought to be able to do this. We actually, uh, approved where it goes. And so 679,009 is in recovery support service, because we didn't spend all our money. Trying to figure out how we do this because we, this board, uh, specifically gave some things that we did, but held that other money in, um, held it back. Uh, so I'm trying to figure out, is that 679 the amount we held back or it just got, and I do understand the addiction, the syringe, the lock, the lock thumb, we did all of that. We approved all of that, but, uh...
Yes, that's the money we held back and then we didn't, we, we have not spent and so we have to reappropriate it because we have a deadline to reappropriate funds or that follows a fund balance. And with this, we have to do this reappropriation at the end of the year.
And so it comes back to us to be able to, to do that because I know Commissioner Keith always talks about the education piece and whether we were going to put that in there and all of that. Okay. With that, I would move to approve, uh, item I, Madam.
Second.
It's been proved and properly second. All those in favor?
Can I have a discussion?
I'm sorry, discuss, I'm sorry, Commissioner Keith.
No, 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 it's, it's okay. I thi, I think everybody knows it's a passion of mine and, and I appreciate you taking it off and, and recognizing that it, uh, is something that is coming all the way down to our, our children in, in the school system. And not only can we educate children to recognize the effects prior to addiction, but they can also recognize the effects that it may happen with a classmate. Or a teacher may be able to recognize that if a student is having an overdose or when they go home and they can see a family member, they will know what to do. They will know what the process is and that can save lives. So thank you for taking that off, um, Commissioner Adams. And please, please, let's put some money towards education because
Yes.
An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Okay. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. Now we will move on to items of business. Uh, Manager Greer, if you would introduce the next item and presenter.
Yes. Recently, we, um, reviewed proposals for the, uh, employee daycare childcare center. We wanted to provide you an update of the results of, of the work that staff has been doing regarding the, uh, the childcare center. Heather Skeens, Assistant County Manager, will provide an overview and update as to, uh, the process and where we stand. Along with Faith Phillips.
I'm writing that. Where is it?
All right. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. So we are here to update you on our employee childcare initiative. Um, as you all know, the county is working on new and innovative ways to minimize challenges to recruitment and retention. Um, and we are striving to be an employer of choice within the region and the state. Um, so one of the, uh, early challenges to recruitment and retention that we recognized was access to quality childcare for our employees. Um, so we have been very busy working and we are excited today to share you the progress that we have made thus far. So just to do a brief recap, um, in our, we had an information gathering process. So in that process, Assistant County Manager Skeens attended the North Carolina Division of Child Development and Early Education's pre-licensure workshop. Um, I researched and spoke with other counties that provided childcare to their employees. And we included a question about employee childcare to a survey of all of staff in September of 2022 to get an initial idea of their needs. Um, the knowledge that we took away from these conversations, surveys and workshop informed our next steps. We identified an existing county building that could be repurposed into a childcare facility, the Dorothy Spainhour facility. We created an interdepartmental committee of staff from county management, human resources, internal services, budget and performance, finance, and the library. Um, this committee met to discuss the parameters of the project and developed a budget for facility improvements based on the NCDCDE licensure requirements. The team stressed the importance of bringing in an operator who would operate the facility and would, um, secure the license. We discussed the contribution from the county, which focused on needed improvements to the facility, large scale furniture, fixtures and equipment, and some technology. The operator would cover all operational needs for the facility. With this information, we brought our budget request to the American Rescue Plan Committee on March the 4th and to this board on March the 7th. Our next step was to issue an informal request for proposals for an operator for the facility. We widely advertised this RFP. In addition to the normal channels, we issued a press release of the opportunity. We emailed the opportunity and information about it to NCDCDE, I hope I got that right, um, to send out to all of their contacts. And we included the opportunity on the county's social media and we individually emailed all of the licensed childcare providers in Cumberland County. That was over 200 emails that we directly sent to let people know about this opportunity. We received a great response to this RFP, a total of seven proposals. Over the course of July and early August, the committee reviewed the proposals and we conducted interviews of the top three scoring proposals on August 17th. And I'll turn it over to Heather.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As Faith mentioned, our committee spent a sm, a significant amount of time reviewing and interviewing vendors who submitted proposals. We wanted to find the right vendor who embodied Cumberland County's mission, vision and values. Little Makers submitted an impressive proposal and participated in an interview which demonstrated a proven record of providing quality childcare in North Carolina. The owners of Little Makers are committed to this center and have extensive experience with, um, North Carol, Carolina Division of Child Development, Early Education, um, and their licensing requirements. They currently operate two facilities in Wake County. One of these provides support to the homeless shelter in, um, Wake County. Little Makers will operate all six classrooms with ages ranging between six weeks to school age and is open and willing to provide non-traditional hours and, um, non-traditional days of the week. We are hoping for a soft opening in January of 2024 and will begin working with the provider on licensing requirements, renovation to the building and completing another survey for need. The soft opening of one to two rooms will allow the provider and the county to ensure the operations run smoothly. Full opening will be no later than July of 2024. Our committee would like to thank you for your support in this creative opportunity to recruit and retain, and retain our workforce by being employer of choice. And Faith and I are here for any questions.
Thank you, um, for your work and your research. Um, one question, um, how long have, um, they've been in operation, Little Makers?
Don't quote me on this, but I think it is 2014, 2016, somewhere in that age range. So Little Makers has been in operation in Raleigh for a, a number of years.
Okay. The soft opening with the two classrooms, any idea of what that age range would be?
Yes, they anticipate the youngest, um, so the six weeks to one-year-old.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Adams.
And I, and I do thank you because we've been pushing for this for a while. Uh, and I know you talked about the non-traditional hours. Um, and I think that's important because of our first responders who work 24- of our first responders who work 24/7 and they, and, and we're a military community, so some of these husbands and wives are, who would maybe do that, might get called in or whatever. So those non-traditional hours are very important, and so if we can work through that, that's, I think that, but thank you all. They all have done a lot of work on this, and I thank you so much.
Commissioner Adams, I think, and this is what I want to say, but I think it's probably what you were saying, that if there's some, to have some provisions for in case of an emergency and somebody gets called in, that they have room for that child, just because there's an emergency that just jumps off, maybe something that weren't expected, you know, they weren't expected to be there, but, you know, something happens and, you know, Faith and Adam have to come in to, you know, then they have, you know, giddy in, yeah.
We are hoping that they will, and this won't be in the soft opening, this will be later on.
Right.
And of course, it will be in conjunction, conjunction with the licensing requirements in terms of room size.
Ratio.
Et cetera.
Yeah.
But yes, we have been, been in talks with Littlemakers to do a drop-in opportunity also, particularly around sick. And we've also talked about when we are experiencing emergencies or disasters or closures, we still need our employees to be able to come in to work, and so what would that look like for this center?
Okay, thank you. I think I said giddy in again. Commissioner, okay, Booth, I don't want to hurt your, go ahead, Commissioner Booth.
Thank you, ma'am. First of all, I agree with everybody else, this is going to be something that I think, especially with our community and our dynamics of our employees and our positions and stuff, will be very, very helpful. Looking at the bad side of this, only one center, did we look at the feasibility of doing a couple of different centers? Because if I have to make it to one side of the county but have to go all the way over to Spanhour to drop my kids off, is my employer going to give me that extra half hour to get back across? Or I, I just don't know, a north and a south, an east and a west, a north, south, east and a west center is going to be that much more expensive than to just have one place. You know, even if it's provided by the employer, it may not be feasible for me to make it there, back, and everything all in my regular workday. So I didn't know if that was taken into consideration. And secondly, I think we should put Faith in charge of sending out notices for our requests for proposals and requests for contracts and everything, because if somebody didn't get the notice on this thing, then they were hiding from her. So I'd like, thank you for stretching out the wide net and trying to make sure you got everybody involved, and we did hear a month from now, I never got no notice, I'd have been on that. And we hear that all the time.
Yeah. We also want to charge Faith with writing a grant for us, because if Faith writes a grant, it's coming. We're going to get it. Commissioner.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. Commissioner Keith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so I'm going to be the, the detail person on this one. First of all, Commissioner Booth, this thing's expensive, okay? And just to get one off the ground, but we all have to be conscious of, if, if you recall, we, we've kind of gone down this path with COVID, and there was a bit of a backlash about opening up for childcare dur, during the COVID time, because ultimately, we are spending taxpayer money for, for this. So what I would ask, and our responsibility is that taxpayer money is well-spent, and we need employees, childcare is important, I mean, everybody acknowledges that. But what we have to have safeguards against, of course, are the integrity of the system. So the first thing I would ask is who qualifies and at what percentage of a stipend or subsidy is going, I, I think it's a mistake to provide absolute free healthcare, I mean, free childcare, because in, in the workforce, people have it. I, I am completely for subsidized health, I'm sorry, childcare. As we go in there, but we just got to figure that out. And then, is it available only to children, or is it available to grandchildren? And to the point of opening in non-traditional hours, if, if the county is closed during the day, holiday, weekends, is the center going to be open also? I mean, we don't need this just to be a drop-off so people can take recreation, it is for work, work portion and to attract good employees. So all those questions are things that I would ask if they haven't been addressed.
I think we've addressed all of those questions. So our committee voted to not provide any subsidy for this childcare.
Okay.
The, and Faith mentioned that the, the vendor is required to fully operationalize without any county dollars to support other than the renovations that have already been approved.
But, but wait.
So the county, the vendor will be responsible for ensuring their operational costs are covered without any subsidy or enhancements from the county.
So they're going to, they're going to pay, they're going to pay the vendor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So there is no subsidy?
Correct.
But, but it is at a reduced rate from what, would it be at a reduced rate?
It is not a reduced rate. The vendor will be eligible to accept Military Plus and subsidy from the federal government, so childcare subsidy that is issued through Department of Social Services.
Okay.
Based off eligibility.
Okay, well, thank you.
The county is not.
I think this keeps the integrity of everything in line. Thank you very much.
One thing to kind of address one of your questions, in hearing from staff and just talking to other parents that I know, it seems like one of the biggest barriers is
not, sometimes not the call, especially if we provide the military subsidy and the DSS subsidy, it's the year-long plus wait list.
Yes.
So what we're hoping with this facility is that if, if it is dedicated for, you know, the children of employees, then they would, we would mitigate that wait list a little bit and provide that access.
Okay, thank you. Those are all very good answers. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
You answered my questions, since I always get to go last. I just wanted to make sure subsidy was in there of you all, if they were going to be accepting from military and DSS, so that was my concern, but you answered yes. So I'm pleased with that. Thank you.
My apologies, Commissioner Jones.
That's okay, I'm just teasing you.
It doesn't give me first, second, and third when I see this. Commissioner Adams.
You know, Commissioner Booth and Commissioner Keith and the rest of our commissioners, you know, this goes back to all of this of retention of our employees and being able to have a benefit, and that's what this is, is to be able to try to retain those and to recruit folk to be able to come. And I was at, and I, I think Ms. Skeens would tell you, Partnership for Children, that if you are thinking about having a child, you need to get on the wait list now to get daycare in Cumberland County. That's how bad, that's how it has backed up in terms of a lack of childcare, a lack of quality childcare in this community. And I think out of the RFP, you all were looking for somebody who was just not going to babysit, but were doing some quality childcare in this community, and so my hat's off. I, I think you heard this board when we said we wanted to, to do that, Mr. Managing Staff, in terms of retention and, and our employees, and I think this is a benefit that will be able to help HR in their recruitment efforts and everything else. So thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will move on to nominations, and I will call on Vice Chairman Adams.
And the first would be for the Cumberland County Board of Health. We received from the Board of Health the recommendation of Dakota Wright. I, I did try to look on the Board of Health applicant list, and I did not see that name on there, and it was just a letter that we received saying that they had put forth that name. Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Natalie Sharp.
Any other nominations? So those are the nominations for the Board of Health.
And now we will move on to appointments. Vice Chairman Adams.
Yes, that would take us to appointments. We have one appointment, we have two applicants, so we'd ask that you vote for one or the other. The first would be Adams Phillips, all of those in support, and I think that was the nominee by Commissioner Jones, all of those in support of voting for Adam Phillips.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Booth, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Counsel, Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Adams.
Okay. And for Raf Huff.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Faircloth and Commissioner Keith.
That would leave Adam Phillips, who is actually present, as the nominee for our appointment to the Fayetteville Technical Community College Board of Trustees. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Phillips. At this time, we will go into closed session. Is there a motion?
I move to go in pursuant to NCGS 143318, point 11A5.
Is there a second?
Real property acquisition.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Motion to come out of closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Admiss.[1794.28]